And he can take over. I'll call the meeting to order. The time is seven oh one. And we are in the council chambers of the county building. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please rise and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, let's do row call. Commissioner Beckstrom.
Here.
Commissioner Stetts.
Here.
Commissioner Dow.
Here.
Commissioner Alder.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell, welcome. We're glad to have you. And I'm Commissioner Scott and I will be running the meeting in the absence of Commissioner Hope. We can hope he shows up. Um, first item of business is the approval of the minutes from our June fourth meeting. First of all, is there any corrections, updates, or comments on the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stetts, uh, Commissioner Beckstrom, uh, second by Commissioner Alder. Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Our first item of business is conditional use permit. Um, we'll turn the time over to staff for the presentation.
Yeah, Trish DeClos with planning staff presenting CUP twenty twenty-three dash one one six. Um, you guys had seen this in a previous meeting. Um, you tabled it for concerns of traffic in, in the area. Um, and we did find out, uh, that there are already access lanes off of thirty-six.
Okay.
Ingress and egress lanes, so, um, excel and decel lanes. Um, so I, I believe that's the only thing that we were really worried about there. So the traffic study, it already took care of that. So is there any other questions or anything on that?
Anyone have any questions? Um, I did notice when I went out the next day, I mean, Mr. Dow drives by that every day.
I'm good.
I did notice, um, my concern is the length of them, but if you don't feel that's acceptable, then who are we questioning that? Um, since this is tabled from a previous, uh, meeting, all we can, uh, need to do is have a vote on it at this period. We don't have to have a public hearing. We've already done that.
You closed it, yes.
What's that?
You closed it in the last meeting, yes.
Yeah, so, um, any comments? Anyone? I would entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Madam Chair, I motion that we approve CUP twenty twenty-three dash one one six.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion that we approve. CUP two zero two three dash one one six. Um, we will do row call on this. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell, how do you vote?
I vote.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
I'm, uh, Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, motion passes, approved CUP. Our next item of business is land use ordinances, um, two zero two five dash zero seven nine.
Yeah, so the next couple you're gonna hear are text amendments to our land use ordinance. The first one is twenty twenty-five dash zero seven nine. And the request is, um, to add land farming and land farming modified into our chapter twenty-seven cha- uh, land use code, which is mining quarry, sand, and gravel excavations. Um, and if you look through the packet, there's definitions for both of those, um, that we'll add into those chapters. And, um, just that we make that, uh, as part of those tables in that chapter as well.
Can you just briefly, like recap? How is this different than what we already have for gravel pits and such?
Um, so what they're doing with the soil is that they're treating it, um, so that it's not, uh, contaminated. Um, and then they can either sell it off or continue with other uses of that area. Like, um, yeah, they're just treating the soil.
Okay, I read that and I'm like, that's selling it off? That's what we do with gravel pits? We've had several.
Yeah, but, so these would be, so they're taking the soil from other places, like they're bringing it in from other places. And then they're, um, however their processes work there, that's what they're gonna be doing. So it's not necessarily that they're excavating it from their property.
All right, when I, when you talk farming, I assume it's coming from this piece of ground. I mean, okay, so I'm not totally off base. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So essentially they're reclaiming.
Uh, yes. Thank you. I understand that word. I didn't see it in there. Okay, any other questions? Let's see. Uh, let, I will open the public hearing. For this. If you have a question or, well, no questions. If you have a comment on this, I'll just ask you to come up to the podium. Write your name down and address on the clipboard and state your name for the record. And, um, we'll limit the, the comment is to two minutes tonight for all, all public hearing. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the board, the commission, um, to ask the staff?
Um, just some clarification real quick, sorry.
Okay.
Just to make sure that it is a conditional use, uh, approval, uh, approved through planning, planning commission. Um, that's the type of use that they're requesting. And then we also added in the, the title to, um, make sure that those are not any closer than thirteen hundred feet from a residential or commercial zoning district. And that's the new state.
Okay, so it follows the state guidelines?
Yeah, so we just had to add residential and commercial.
Okay.
Boundaries.
Sorry, there's a lot to scroll through this week. I will, I'll make a motion that we, do we recommend this?
Yes.
Re- recommend to the county council to approve, um, T C L U O two zero two five dash zero seven nine text amendment to Tulac County, land use chapters two and twenty-seven. And, um, to adopt the definitions of land farming and land farming modified to the land use ordinance, as well as adding the terms to chapter twenty-seven, mining quarry, sand, and gravel excavation. Um, Commissioner Scott made the.
Motion.
Thank you. Motion, Commissioner Dow seconded. Um, Commissioner Beckstrom, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Thank you very much. So moving on to uh, rezones, two zero two five dash zero.
Uh, you'll have two more text amendments, sorry.
Oh, two more on this one?
Yeah, they're like, let's see.
Uh, oh, is it?
Five B is where we're at. So it'll go A, B.
Two zero two five zero eight two, sorry. I skipped over that.
It's kind of a new formatting, so.
I know.
So item five B, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, so Trish DeClos. So this is an applicant request. The applicant Brock Brown is requesting that, uh, we add firearms training facility and outdoor and indoor shooting ranges, um, into our, um, land use table for MU forty zones and then for MG zones. Um, and then adding a definition to that into chapter two. So we've had quite a few requests over the years, um, to do this. And currently our land use code does not have them in there, so they're not allowed. So planning staff did help the applicant to try and find zones that fit this use. And so we've come up with the MU zones, not just forty, so MU forty, MU eighty, MU one sixty, and then the MG zones. Um, and applicant did do quite a bit of research. Um, the definition is also in, in your, the requested definition, so, um, yeah, I don't know. He did provide a lot of operational type, um, information in there, but that's not what we're going to hear today. That'll be under.
So with the MU zone, um, remind me what the boundaries are for residential areas?
Um, the state code requires that any, uh, shooting ranges is a thousand feet.
Just a thousand?
Well, it requires that there be a deed notification to the surrounding areas.
What notification?
If they're located within a thousand.
A deed notification.
Oh, deed, okay.
Yeah, a deed restriction, so like any developments that come in or something, that will have to be posted on their, either the plat, or their deeds, or whatever development's gonna come in within a thousand feet of that.
And any neighbors that this would affect?
Yeah, so you'll have, you'll, yeah, so their request is to make this a conditional use permit, so you'll see each of these come in through planning commission too. So we can do all of those by case by case thing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions, and probably more educate me. So when I look at this, land use is, is, is a general plan. I would imagine in a community like ours, we'd only see a one-off of these. What's being described is fairly large. I've been to these facilities, they're great. For a one, one-off item, do we have to update the land use plan? Or is there something different? Because I wouldn't expect that every person who owns forty acres is gonna come up and with a conditional use to you and ask, hey, I wanna do this too. Educate me, please.
No, so for the land use, uh, portion of like the zoning codes, um, they're just, um, uses that could be allowed in those areas. Um, and there's different kinds of levels of those. So the permitted ones, they don't have to have a conditional use permit. Um, they do have to do a site plan through staff, so all that has to be approved. And then there's the staff level, um, one where only the staff sees it and approves it. They can put conditions on it. And then, um, the regular conditional use permits that come before you guys as a board. And so those kind of uses, if you feel like there's any nuisances that you need to mitigate, um, those are the conditions that you can put on to each of those properties. And so each property is gonna be a little bit different. Um, and there's a wide range of, of different uses in different areas. Um, so just like the, the multi-use zone that we're talking about. You can do homes on there. Um, you can do industrial uses, you can do a certain type of commercial uses. Um, and so it's just, it really depends on what we want to allow in those kinds of areas. So it's not really a rezone, it's already there, those zones already exist. If somebody wants to rezone to put the firearm in there, that's where the, the general plan would come in, to amend that. Um, the land use codes are just kind of a living document where we come in and, and fit the needs of the county at that time.
Okay, they, they define what's possible?
Yes.
Then a conditional use permit would be required?
Yes.
I like the thought of a conditional use permit simply because of the nature of this industry and the site plan, being able to impose conditions for safety measures.
I agree.
And you might be surprised how many times we've had one of this businesses come before the board in the four years I've served, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, because he had a lot. Any other questions? Um, okay, let's open it up to the public hearing. Again, if you have a question, or sorry, if you have comments on this pertaining to this, um, possible re- uh, rezone?
Text amendment?
Amendment, sorry, thanks. Um, please come up, state your name, and write your name and address on the board, on the clipboard. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing due to lack of participation. Any comments or questions? Any thoughts on this from the commissioners? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, a motion that we approve T C L U O two zero two five dash zero eight two.
Can we approve or do we recommend?
Do you recommend it?
Or recommend?
Sorry?
I motion that we recommend T C L U O two zero two five dash zero eight two.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Alder. Um, again, we'll do a re- a row call. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
Okay, that's, it's approved for favorable recommendation to the council. And next, oh, we have a P C. Um, two zero two five dash ne- zero nine two, a request for amendment to the land use chapter thirty-five.
Yeah, so, um, this is just complying with the new state requirements. Um, there's a couple of, um, minor fixes, and I can kinda go over those if you want, just to, to update our, our subdivision code. Instead of saying planning commission, we want the land use authority because it may change in the future. And so the state requires that the land use authority approves these. Um, and then in our, currently, under the county, um, that is planning commission, but that could change. So we just wanna make sure that it's consistent all around. And then, in the very back of, um, the chapter, um, they're requiring that any boundary adjustments follow these standards. So, uh, we've just updated those. So it'll be simple boundary adjustments or full boundary adjustments and those requirements according to state.
I like the language changes.
What is that?
I like the language change of this, it was a good update.
That's it.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Oh, we do, sorry, well, there's one more right here. In the final, the final plat requirements, this is also, uh, state requirements. We just didn't catch it before. So we can only require, um, certain requirements in preliminary or final, we can't require them in both. So, um, the health department has said that they're not gonna, to give us feasibility studies with preliminary review anymore. So I just put those in final and then just adjusted some of those final requirements for final plat.
Now, final plat, it, we don't see it, right? It doesn't come down, we only see preliminary. So that's the only time we could impose restrictions or requirements, right?
Essentially, yeah, subdivisions are hard to, to do that in, but, yeah, so the state just requires that, um, only, yep, only preliminary goes before the land use authority, which is you guys for Tulac County. Um, and then just making sure that we didn't have both requirements, like same requirements in both sections.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Mitchell, did you have a comment?
I do have questions. Why was, uh, the evidence of water rights removed from the preliminary?
Um, it, we moved it to final.
What was, was there any particular reason for that?
Yeah, so the health department and the state, uh, water rights division won't offer that information until after they've gotten preliminary approval.
Okay, thank you. This is on the final, so maybe it doesn't matter, but the pedestrian and road connection plans moved to the final?
Um.
Or remove, was removed from the?
Yeah, because they're in preliminary.
Okay, thank you.
So that's when we can ask for trails or something in, around it. And we want it in the preliminary, we don't want it at the end, yeah.
And then I think you might have an error in, uh, the title section thirty-five eight four. Uh, that's struck out too, along with the paragraph. I think you just want the paragraph struck out, but you want that numeric value there.
On the, uh, let me find it. Sorry, I have a big packet here. You said thirty-eight four?
Thirty, yeah, thirty-five eight four.
Thirty-five eight four.
If you do an accept all, it's gonna drop that.
Um, yeah, essentially it's the same thing. Uh, I can talk to Nathan about formatting.
It's the paragraph numbering itself. I don't know if you wanna drop that.
It's below. You just changed the title, so you struck out the paragraph number, but it's below on boundary adjustments, the number's there.
The number's there, okay, thank you. That's all I have, thanks. Are you ready for a motion?
Nope.
Oh.
Uh, now open public hearing.
Yes.
And, again, if you would like to comment, please come forward, state your name and write your name and address on the clipboard. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Beckstrom, I'll now entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend T C L U O two oh two five dash oh nine two. Or do you read the rest of it?
No, what are you recommending?
Recommend approval, excuse me.
No, no, you, you either recommend, um, yeah, a favorable or unfavorable to the county council.
Okay, favorable, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Beckstrom, second by Commissioner Stetts, to do a favorable recommendation to the county council to adopt this. Um, Commissioner Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
And Commissioner Beckstrom, thank you.
Yes.
All right. So now we're doing
rezones.
Six, right?
Correct.
You guys have me, uh, it used to be each one was a. Okay, take one. Uh, so, uh, rezones, R E Z two zero two five dash zero four six. J, uh, Charles Arklo with the inland port is requesting a rezone of two hundred thirty-two point five two acres from a multiple use forty to an MG.
Um, yeah, so, um, Charles Ackler, Acklerlo with the inland port, um, is requesting these parcels be rezoned. Um, and council actually did approve this extension of the inland port. And you'll probably see something here in the near future for some north of this area too. So, um, the council's approved this area, um, so it's just the formality to get it rezoned so that they can continue their development.
Do you, will you just clarify what the, the MG is?
Um, yeah, it's general manufacturing. Um, so there's a wide range of, of uses, uh, that they can do in there, uh, according to our table. Uh, the, the main concern, and I, I'm sure that, um, Charles would be happy to talk on it, is just that Higley Road, um, that's gonna have to be reclassified as a truck route through the transportation plan. And it's gonna have to be improved upon in order for all of the, um, to accommodate all of these industrial uses. And I'm sure if you, if he has questions or anything about the roads, I'm sure he's planning on updating those. He's actually submitted a concept plan that adds more, um, not just Higley Road, but there'll be quite a few more, at least two that I could see.
Well, are we talking north of the cannabis farm, that's right?
Uh, it's just where, uh, west. Yeah, northwest. It's just northwest of it. So the cannabis farm is south of Higley, this is just north of Higley.
Okay.
Um, yeah, just west of his current MG zone in the map there.
That was sure. New road would help several of the applicants we've heard over the last two years, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I've got a question for you, Trish.
Yes.
Speaking of past applicants, refresh my memory. Didn't we deny a rezone request two or three meetings ago because we did not want to designate Higley Road as a truck route?
We tabled that.
We tabled that one, uh, 'cause I thought that was the, um, the issue that we had was that there were several landowners there, including the Higleys, that didn't want that designated as a truck route.
Um, yeah, so quite a few of those properties have been bought over. Um, but yeah, essentially when, um, the development comes in, they're gonna be forced to improve that road.
But at that one, when we tabled it, there was no, no one spoke against it. We just were concerned about the width of the war, the road. Where two, Sam and I couldn't safely pass. So that was our concern. There was no landowners that spoke. We haven't seen a landowner in this for about a year.
We left it with the property owner who's going to work with the, with the staff to get it to where we.
Yeah, some conditions of, um, uses that could be in there that would, um, limit the amount of traffic or what kind of traffic there is. And so that's gonna be the next item, actually, so we can discuss that later. But, um, yeah, with this one, um, and it's pretty much the whole length of Higley, um, and including the next rezone. So that whole, the whole section of that road will be taken care of in the future, they'll have to.
Thank you. Yeah.
It's in a water truck that night.
Yep. Yep.
Gotta do, gotta do.
Wait, he had the headphone on, he was in a meeting, so. Any other comments or questions? Yes.
So it appears it's compliant with the land use plan. But with the existing infrastructure, did I read correctly that at capacity, this would be thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three trips per day?
It could, um, it's hard to.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just doing, um, a wide range of uses in that area. So we really don't know exactly what's gonna come in at this point, um, for every property, but it's gonna be a lot of traffic for the inland port.
How does this body have influence on that then?
What's that?
How does this body have pay, influence on the pace of that?
Um, I don't really know.
What specifically are you asking? What, what do you wanna control?
Um, the timing of, you build to capacity, but thirteen thousand trips, uh, in that infrastructure isn't gonna work. And we can see what's going on in I eighty right now with the interchanges. If we try and do that right now, if they build a full structure there, try and bring that, that many trucks, we've really hurt ourselves. But if they're pacing it out over five or ten years, that's something to, to take a look at. But I didn't see anything in, in the traffic studies or anything that said, here's a plan, here's, here's how we would grow into this area.
Um, that happens with development. So they're gonna be required to do all the infrastructure before anything can come in. So it's, those roads are gonna have to be able to handle all of that traffic study. So they'll, it'll be taken care of as development comes in. Well, yeah, so our maximum standard is a hundred feet, uh, width of a road. And that would help include any excel, decel lanes. And so that's what they're currently doing on Burmester, they're widening it and adding all those in there. Um, it's gonna be up to the traffic engineer to decide what's gonna be required in that area. Um, if there's gonna be lights, if there's gonna be like stoplights or any other excel, decel lanes, what the traffic, uh, the speed limit would be, like those, that's gonna be up to the traffic engineer.
So this body doesn't have influence on the pace of that?
Um, no.
Who is our traffic engineer for the county?
Um, we consult with, uh, Ensign.
Okay.
That's what I thought. We, could we make a bad assumption that, um, that there is too much, gonna be too much traffic? And, and if they ruin the roads, could they come after the, the county to say, hey, the, the roads have been ruined and we need improvements quickly to, so that we can, we can handle our own traffic to this location?
Um, I believe this area is gonna be in a private industrial, right?
I can clarify.
Is that, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say the landowners here, we'll have them come up in a little bit, but. Um, Burmester and Higley, which is.
Yeah.
Is ours, the county, it's already there. Is ours, the county, it's already there, we can't change that. The rest is.
Okay.
So it'll be, yeah, it'll be up to them to maintain those internal roads that they put in, but.
And not all of Higley's, Twella County, right?
It will be, yeah, so all, like I said, when development comes in, the infrastructure is gonna be taken care of very first. So anytime they want to try and build anything on their, or site plan, or subdivision, or anything, the infrastructure and those approvals will have to come first.
Okay.
Okay.
I noticed, uh, also, there was no, we don't have any neighborhood comment yet. I'm wondering if we're gonna have some tonight, hopefully. If we don't, is there any actions that should be taken to have that discussion? Or just public notice enough?
Well, it's public notice, and they usually send out no, no, cards, notices directly to the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Did, I missed that one.
But, um. Any other questions?
Should we have the landowner come up first or after public hearing?
Let's open public hearing, and then maybe anything that comes up, he will be able to address. Again, if you have comments on this particular thing, uh, come up, state your name, and write it down on the clipboard. We do have somebody with their hand up on Zoom, so we'll begin with that comment.
She's on mute. And I live in unincorporated Twella County. I actually live on Burmester. Chalk is on my huge issue. Um, seems like I'm operating. I'm planning on those two. Actually, I'm just doing, I guess, connected to. Businesses that are trying to drive a lot of traffic on the street. From people going to, like, them. And also, you're not able to stop that much traffic because, um, because the truck job definitely doesn't. And, uh, water resources is making us, and, uh, also, uh, I'm trying to stay as they need. And, you know, the section that that would be, um, affecting, because only in the apartments and apartments relatively as far as, since we're building from there, it's super. And also, the water resources is not updated, um, it's not twenty-two, this is, um. Also, I'm gonna remember, uh, I think, uh, probably, uh, I'm sorry to be, uh, uh, uh. Also, to see, um, uh, the project, uh, those resources, uh, really, uh, 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 need. And, so, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what we're gonna, um, um, that area, and, uh, so, I think, uh, that's gonna be a concern as we cannot push it out.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We have one, another comment, and again, we're gonna limit it to two minutes, you didn't hit that, but. Okay. We have one online. First, Fitzgerald.
Yes. Uh, Jamie Fitzgerald, we are, like, kitty corner, mainly, um, and right next to the side tower, which is one of the rezone property parcels. How is this rezone going to affect property taxes in the area? And the surrounding properties, because the property taxes are already asked.
We, we can take comments, we can't answer questions, unfortunately, and that's not when we would be qualified to answer either.
Hi, Mi, uh, Michael Drury, I signed in previously. I'm the, uh, rezone application afterwards. I'm, I'm in support of, uh, this rezone, um, and I've actually owned quite a bit of property even west of it, and, but I've got aquatic resource, uh, reports that show, we're still having to go down ten, twelve feet before you hit water, but the ground is, is good, it's buildable. Um, we're excited about having Higley Road professionally developed. I was responsible for selling the cannabis, the property to the cannabis operation in Utah Track and Welding. Those are both, uh, very good, successful businesses, and, uh, I'm in support of the entire port project and what it's bringing. As far as the commercial area out there by the freeway and keeping the residential a little closer to town. So I think it's a good overall master development in support of the project.
Please remember to write your name.
Yes, my name is on the list here, do I need to write it again?
Nope.
Okay. My name's Cameron Ordakowski, uh, I'm actually a realist, uh, commercial real estate agent. I live out in Utah County, actually, and my comments are, is, once, I've had a lot of clients that have been looking to this whole area, and I'm super excited for the development and the jobs it'll bring to the area, because in Utah County, we are full, and Salt Lake County, they are full. And there's just so many people that want to build as the Beehive State goes and works, so the next best location is really Twella County. Park City in that area, there's just nowhere for any type of serious commercial development, and just being along I eighty, it's just got a lot of interest, and I'm just excited for the jobs it'll bring to the area, and I'm actually looking to move out to the area as well, too, because I just love the growth. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else on line? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any other comments or thoughts from the commission, uh, the council? No, commission.
A comment that may turn into a question. Um, and this might be for Rochelle, this might be for Trish, I don't really know. Something that I don't think gets talked about enough is, and I, and it, it, this directly affects what I'm about to say. Can our infrastructure handle, what did you say, Commissioner Mitchell, thirteen thousand?
Six-hundred-and-eighty-three daily trips.
How many of those vehicles, I know this traffic study was focused on, uh, the pertaining area, but how many of those, uh, trucks are gonna hit I eighty?
All of them. Because that's where they want to wrap them. They, they're gonna limit, Grantsville is my understanding.
Exactly.
You don't want a truck route through there.
No, and, uh, and I agree, um, but, uh, last week is a good example. How many days was I eighty shut down for hours at a time, because our infrastructure cannot simply handle the amount of traffic that we have? And I don't think it's, I think it's something that doesn't get talked about enough. And I, I don't know if this planning commission has any say, uh, for this rezone because of our feelings towards the infrastructure, but I, I seriously think that it needs, it's something that needs to be looked at, um, because we have a, a pretty serious issue. Um, it's almost, almost a daily occurrence, and I think that it is something that needs to be looked at before it gets brought to us, because if it doesn't change, it's only going to get worse.
However, there's already processes in the works. I eighty is being expanded, there's the dedicated lane from ninety-nine to exit one-oh-two that they are working on. They've already, um, widened both lanes, both ways on thirty-six to three lanes, so. But if you're talking about infrastructure, I think there is a little bit of forward planning, because by the time this is built up, and realistically, I work in the trucking industry, the fact that you're getting, you're not gonna realistically have that. I mean, in the West Valley area where you already have this inland port, you don't see that much traffic, and it's been in place for years. But there is some, I think, I see some forward planning. I mean, I've been driving this route for twenty-five years, so when I first started working in the trucking industry, there, thirty-six was one lane.
Well, I, I do agree with you, um, you know, we, we all, the ones that were here to vote on it saw what was proposed, uh, for our, uh, transportation plan, master transportation plan. But like the gentleman that spoke, he said, you know, there's, Utah County's full, Salt Lake County's full, this is the place to move. We, we need to be careful that we don't put the cart before the horse, and we're already headed in that direction.
We have been for twenty-five, we have been since day one.
Yeah.
I agree with that also, but I thought that this location would actually probably be the best to avoid that situation. Had to expand, kind of do, this location has one of the least impacts that, you know, around.
Yeah, in the history of our country, that westward expansion, and it's coming our way still, so.
I, I agree with that, and I'm not saying I disagree with this rezone, I just, and I agree with Commissioner Alder, it's just that choke point, because everything leads right into that choke point. Um, and so it's something that.
Doing a study of this area, they've had several public hearings and are not getting much, uh, participation.
Where?
Where speaks first. Um, but they have stated they will not throw state dollars at infrastructure before growth. The growth and congestion have to be here first.
That's the issue with the school system.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. When they widened thirty-six, twenty-five years ago, I was at a public hearing, said, why don't you buy up? You know, we could have mass transit, you know, trains and stuff, and they said, you don't have the people yet, when you do, we'll talk about it. So. Now we have a problem, okay.
If I could make a quick comment?
Yes.
I think Rochelle probably just gave the answer to the question I was gonna ask, but, uh, that particular exit off of I eighty could become what thirty-six has become, coming into, into Lake Point. That is, that it became a choke point off of I eighty at that particular spot, but I guess we need to see evidence before they will improve it, it sounds like so. But I think that choke point might become an, an issue that makes it one, one of the next priorities for, for UDOT, or, yeah, for UDOT to say, okay, it's a choke point, we now, you need to improve that spot.
So you could, um, make a condition that the applicant get with UDOT, let UDOT know their plan, get a letter to you guys from UDOT, which he may have already done, we have not heard from him yet, I do not know, but you could ask for that.
Okay, at this point, we will invite the applicant up to talk to us and answer any questions that we might have.
Thank you, commission, I really appreciate it. My name is Chuck Akkerlow, and I would like to take a few moments and just bring you up to date on what we've been doing out there for the last four years. We've been working on this project for that period of time. We are into it, many millions of dollars already in terms of, of work that we've done, roads that have gone in, pipes to the ground and so forth. Would you mind just passing out that sheet?
We have.
You got it, okay. That is, is a summary of my notes, let me just go over them quickly. So first, I wanna give you a background of who we are and how we relate to the county, and then how it relates to the inland port. And I think that's something that a lot of people don't fully understand, took me while to understand it. But when we acquired the property that we acquired, which was the Ballunder piece, that was the first piece we acquired, it was a hundred-and-sixty-two acres, and it was zoned M G already, even though it had no access or anything, it was still zoned, uh, M G some years ago. It has rail that runs right alongside of it, and right now, uh, if you go out there, you'll see Savage Rail is improving that rail and rebuilding it. They bought it from Union Pacific, so Savage Rail, it's part of the Savage Companies, bought that rail line, and they're taking it all the way down to the Lake Point, uh, no, excuse me, the Lakeview Project. And right outside of us are three tracks, and we really get track in, uh, on our property as well. Uh, that, for us, is gonna cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of four million dollars just to do that part of it, which we're more than happy to do, because we have many people, many businesses that would like to have rail. When we, uh, when we bought the property, we then heard of the inland port, but our impression of the inland port at that time was that they would only buying things they were gonna run and develop. But what, at that time, we learned was that they made a shift in their emphasis, and they instead went out to try to identify project areas that they could then support. And what they do, the state legislature has given them authority to issue, uh, public infrastructure districts, it's given them the authority to, uh, negotiate on tax increment financing and so forth. And it's clear that in a place like this, where there is no utilities, where there was nothing, you know, to, to, uh, support industrial, that you have to make a serious investment upfront, and one of the best ways to do that is with, uh, infrastructure financing through bonds. And so that has been the financial plan that we have been working on, to do all of that. We have had this study the heck out of this thing. We have probably to date done five different, um, geotech studies on the property to make sure that everybody that we work with in the county, as well as on our, our bond people and so forth, are comfortable, that this is a buildable place. We have also done something no one else has ever done, and that is, we have organized, we have, uh, engaged a wetlands mitigation study. And the wetlands mitigation study is done by a professional firm, national firm, that has offices here in Salt Lake, and they delineated where the wetlands are. So we had to make the point, the, uh, decision in our layout and design to stay out of the wetlands, except in one case where we needed to cross the wetlands with our interior road. And that took us about four months to get that through the process of the Corps of Engineers. We did it properly, it was done right, and we got the, uh, authority. In the interim, in conversations with Rochelle and with others in the county, it, it became evident that, that the county did not want to have to, uh, take responsibility for the maintain, maintenance of those roads and utilities and so forth out there, uh, particularly if we had this bridged area, I didn't wanna be involved in that. So we organized the Twella Valley Public Infrastructure District. Now, I'm, uh, and my partner is here, Matt Smock, we are property owners and managers of all of this property. We have something like, uh, five-hundred acres now that we're putting under, uh, under development. We are also trustees of the infrastructure district, so I, I can stand here tonight as chairman of that board of trustees and tell you what the infrastructure district is doing. And that we have entered into a contract with the county. Now, you may not have heard of this, but we have an inter-local agreement with Twella County in which it is agreed that we will take ownership of all of our roads, our streets, our, our water pipes, our sewer pipes, our water tank, our booster pump stations, our wastewater treatment facilities, every single thing we're putting into this project, we become responsible for through the district. The district has a taxing ability, so of course it will be able to tax. To the person who worried about taxes going up, this doesn't affect anybody outside of the, of the, uh, development of the industrial park, period. Doesn't affect them. No other taxes go up, except within the district. It's the district that pays back the bonds and maintains the roads and streets. So with that background, um, there was a, a couple of statements made in, in Trish's excellent report that I just wanted to conclude with. One is, you were, you were asked to evaluate for yourselves the, uh, impact of residential and utilities in the area. There is no residential in the area, uh, except for two of the Higley boys still have homes there, but they're moving out, because when we purchased their property, they had the money to go elsewhere. And the, the two remaining, uh, residents there are likely also to move. One is the little zoo that's out there, if you're familiar with that, and that, the lady that ran that was unfortunately and tragically killed in an automobile accident right at, uh, at thirty-six and, and the freeway when she was coming on, to get on the freeway going west. And, uh, and the other one is, um, the widow of, uh, Rulyn Higley, and she's also profited from, you know, some of the purchases. know, some of the purchases and so forth. So that soon will, they'll soon move. I want to come back to Higley Drive though in just a minute. As to public utilities, there are none there. I mean, if you, if you're evaluating what impact we're going to have on existing sewer, sewage treatment plants or water facilities, there's no need. We are developing everything. We own enough water rights to serve this project, we have drilled wells, so we know where our water's coming from, we have designed all of the pump stations and reverse osmosis stations and so forth in the property. Our water tank is now being constructed, excuse me, it's now being manufactured, it'll be delivered here in September, and then you will see it going up. It's a seven-hundred-thousand gallon water tank. The wastewater facility can handle up to thirty-five thousand gallons per day, and the neat thing about this new system, and then, and there's some great things that are happening in the marketplace out there in development that you might want to know about, that's a modular system. So as the, as the project grows and as more need there is for water, daily water use, we can expand it right on the thirteen acres that we, that the pit owns. So if you, if you want to know about, and I put this in my notes too, but if you want to know about the utilities and do we have the utilities to serve, yes, they've all been designed by engineers, water engineers, civil engineers, they've been, they've been impacted upon by the wastewater treatment people, by, by the engineers at the wetlands mitigation, et cetera. So we've carefully moved around this entire project. We've been at this for four years, as I mentioned, and it takes time to put all of these various pieces into place. We made this presentation I'm making to you now, to the county council, recently when we went before them to ask for a resolution from the county council to approve the expansion of our project area. They have approved it, they have adopted a resolution, it will go before the Board of Directors of the Utah Inland Port Authority, second week in September for final approval. What we now wanted to do is upgrade the zoning, because, you know, having the MU forty zone doesn't work very well for the manufacturing and for the technical uses we, we propose. Finally, as to the subject of Higley Road, there's some things that we've discovered as we have done our homework, that I don't think a lot of people know in this, in the county. We've tried to make the county manager's office aware of this, we have also discussed this with the planning office, but the road, Higley Road is not totally owned by the county. You must understand that there's land under that road that is still owned by Arthur Higley. We have no intention of using that road, none. With this new acquisition, we have three accesses, three entrances, three exits into our project, which meets everything the fire department needs, we do not need to go down Higley, nor do we choose to. However, you show it on your, on your master transportation plan as a future connection to the other road that we are now building for the county, which is the connection road that comes off the freeway, goes through our property, goes through the Morton Salt piece of our property we just bought, and you're going to be seeing a, a same kind of zone request for that piece as we're here tonight. And then it comes all the way down to what would be Higley Drive if you took it all the way east. And then, if we continue to develop down toward the south of our property, we will take that road, which is on your plan, and it is county road, and it's been designed to county standards. It's all, all above board on this, and we'll take it and continue it down the road, and it will be a county road. At some point in time, the county may want to take it over, that's fine, but at this point in time, the public infrastructure district has that responsibility. Why do I point out that there's, that there's an ownership issue? It's because I think all of us, property owners and county officials, need to come together to decide what to do about Higley. It is not designed for the use, and I was surprised that the, that the Hales even, you know, thought it could be used as much as it can be, it is simply not designed, and the reason for that is that Arthur Higley built it. And he didn't build it according to county standards, it doesn't have the right away that it should have, and what should want for it to be a county road, and yet the county still claims it as a road, even though it has not been dedicated to it. Arthur Higley has made it very plain and clear to my partner and I, that, that he never dedicated that road to the county. We have had our lawyers and our title people do the research, and we can find no conveyances from Arthur Higley to the county. A little further in on the road, right where you get around where the entrance is to the marijuana plant, that then shows there's a dedication, and I, I have to believe that somehow that got dedicated when that road went down to the, to the farm, to that farm. I'm not sure how it was, but there is part of it that is dedicated, but not the first part where you turn off of Burmester. One final thing that you were discussing, and that is the acquisition and the traffic and so forth that Commissioner Dow was talking about. Right now, we are widening Burmester. Now, Burmester is a county road, and it's a county road almost to the point where the freeway comes off, right by that interchange. We are working with UDOT on what they're going to do with the rest of it, obviously, because we are widening Burmester with acceleration and deceleration lanes, and we're doing that all the way, Matt was about halfway down our property.
Halfway down the road, but the next expansion is going to be all the way out to Interstate eighty.
Right. So, and, and if you go out there now, you will see we've excavated, that road is being widened, we're doing it all under county standards and with county inspectors and with the county on board, and the county has approved everything, so that, that'll be done the way it's supposed to be done, and it will meet the qualifications and the requirements of the transportation study that we had done, excuse me, the traffic study we had done with Hales Engineering. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I want to assure you that we have taken a very professional approach to the development of this property. If there's something that you see that we need to know about and that we need to address, we are more than happy to do that, always want to work with the county. We are now, I now have a government job beyond the trustees, so from one government person to the next, I tell you, we're more than honored to, to deal with anything you might have. I would request that we have a vote on the, on the rezon tonight, since we're trying to make sure that by the time we get to the inland port for their board meetings, we can represent that it's done. Any questions?
I have a question. You, you mentioned you purchased Higley's property, does that not include the route that we've been discussing?
No, as a matter of fact, if you look at that, that yellow, we bought it right to the edge of the road, the north edge of Higley.
Okay.
And then Arthur maintained the Higley part and down, and he, and he, there's a, there's a paragraph in the purchase agreement which says that if we ever want to widen that road, we have to come and pay him for that, that ownership that he has. And so that, of course, is something that when, when and if we get to sit down and talk about what should happen in the future with Higley Road, will, will be dealt with at that time, but that's a good question. But no, we're right to the north boundary of-
Okay. So you didn't buy all of it, you just bought a portion of his-
Didn't bought any of it, of the, you mean of the, of the road?
No, of the Higley property.
Yeah, we just bought what's in the yellow.
Okay.
For now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have one, a couple of questions.
Okay.
You certainly must have a milestone schedule or something you've got in mind for growing to capacity. Do you have anything that's linked to the schedule and the infrastructure upgrades with the study with UDOT? Is that something you can share with us?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, a project this size, you would have a schedule, correct? You've got some type of a-
Development.
Development schedule.
Oh, sure, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so do you have anything linked with UDOT and that infrastructure, those infrastructure-
We haven't had to do anything with UDOT at this point, they're aware of what we're doing on the Burmester side, which is a county, and we do have schedules with the county, they know what, what the schedule is in terms of completing that, and it's being done now. We had a, we had a, we had to do some more borings because the deflection tests weren't, weren't acting as they should.
What body in the county you said has that?
Well, it's the, your Roads Department is the one that, that has approved what we're doing, and, and, and they will, they will maintain that. The public infrastructure district's boundaries do not include the road, but the public infrastructure district is paying for it.
Yeah, I can see that. Commissioner, I don't think that answers your question.
It, it did not.
So he's got a schedule for the completion of the Burmester road improvements, you're asking if he's got a schedule for intended build out, and what infrastructure do you anticipate having to build as your project grows?
Well, we, we have put in all of the infrastructure in the first phase, which includes the, that kind of triangular piece that's marked MG, and then there's a piece we bought from the state of Utah that is also, if you look carefully, it says MG, but it's not colored, and it goes over and connects with the yellow part of the Burmester piece, so that's the total two-hundred-and-forty-two acres. We have put in all of the infrastructure for that two-hundred-and-forty-two acres, together with all the laterals that go off into the property, and we are now also laying out the electrical and the gas.
Yeah, my question is not internal to the facility itself, my question deals with the road structure, the infrastructure. At what point, you're building a capacity of thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-three trips per day, what point do you plan on hitting that?
When do you start?
So it's just pretty much whoever wants to come in at that time, I don't think they've got anything planned as far as that.
I've never seen, I know what you're talking about, but I, I thought that was awfully high, I don't see that, that we generating that kind of traffic, particularly when we have rail, because a lot of our product will come in and out on rail. And then the second thing, Commissioner Mitchell, that I would point out, is that in the yellow piece, right now, that's designated to be a technology center, and we, we are in negotiations with high-tech companies to move there. They don't have the need for trucks and so forth coming in and out, because they're, they're run by computers and so on and so forth, and they don't have also the, the amount of employee traffic.
So I appreciate what you're saying, your Hales engineering study says the project is anticipated to generate approximately thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-three weekday.
And that includes all of it, that includes what we're talking about here, plus the up above, and part of that you haven't seen yet, but on the Morton property we just purchased is a major truck stop travel center that's going to go there. That is where you will have a lot of the traffic. The trucks, in fact, they've got a plan on their layout for something like seventy trucks to park.
Sorry, the documentation doesn't support, I'll, I'll take your word for it. It's all the questions.
Where's that number come from?
Right.
Well, it, it came from whatever calculations they did, but I'll tell you this much, the reason it went up high is when we told them we had this truck stop, because they, you know, they understand the traffic that goes in and out of truck stops. Well, of course, those trucks will come right off the freeway into the travel center and right back out.
So the, this, your traffic study had the, the proposed truck stop included?
Yes. The one we submitted is, was a secondary one after the first one we submitted, which was just for the first phase, but this one you're referring to is for the whole project.
Okay.
And, and it, you know, it didn't, it wasn't thirteen thousand when, when we, before we told them about the truck stop, and then, you know, went up, but again, it's not a burden on anybody, it comes, they come off the freeway and go right back on the freeway.
You had said, when you were explaining this document, that you had been working with UDOT, had been talking to UDOT concerning the Burmester I-80 exchange right there. My question is, have you had, has UDOT done any traffic study concerning this and the proposed traffic that will be added to I-80?
I, I don't know that, they do their own work, and I don't, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I'm assuming they will, they're very slow in what they do, and I don't, I mean, right now, they're happy with what we're doing on the county side, and they, and we've not had, they're just starting to think about what they might have to do on that interchange. We'll share with them our study, we'll give that to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Rochelle, you made a comment earlier-
Turn your mic on.
Rochelle, you made a comment earlier about a conditional approval of this, could you explain that again? I, I like the language you were saying, it helps alleviate some of the concerns I have.
A condition that the applicants notify UDOT with their traffic study and give some acknowledgement from UDOT regarding the capacity of I-80 in that area.
That's acceptable to me, thank you.
I like that too, especially because the staff recommendation, Higley Road is something they're focusing on, and we've just heard that that's not part of it, so there needs to be some resolution there, I think, before-
Well, there's some county code that if you develop adjacent to a planned road, you have to do their own improvements, you have more than likely going to have to dedicate right away, or you had to do it for the marijuana farm.
Right.
But that doesn't come until the subdivision's-
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? A motion?
I motion we adopt it with Rochelle's condition.
Make a favorable recommendation with-
Sorry, make favorable recommendation with that condition attached to it.
And the condition being that you, the landowner gets with UDOT to get-
Provides his road studies to UDOT, and that UDOT provide a response back to that. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Have a motion, can I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to do a favorable recommendation with the note that the landowner will be required to provide his traffic study to UDOT, and they can provide feedback on this interchange for I-80 and Burmester. We have a second by Commissioner Stetz. Commissioner Alder, how do you vote? Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trish, let's move on to the other rezon.
Yes, so presenting twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three-five, you guys had tabled this before, requesting that applicant get with staff to determine what type of uses that could be in that area, to put a condition in that area that it would be light traffic because of Higley Road is not able to handle all of that. I did speak with the applicant, and we came up with a condition that, let me see if I can find it. Get the right verbiage here. Just because we're uncertain if and when the inland port may use or improve Higley Road, staff recommends that a condition on, on this zoning request be for max trips per day, given Hales' study engineering that this applicant provided for his rezon. Planning staff recommends that the condition is that each future business use proposed shall provide a number of trips per day that their business will bring, the max allowed trips for the entire proposed rezon area be capped at two-hundred-and-fifty trips per day until Higley Road is sufficiently approved to provide more traffic. Because if you look at Hales' engineering, the max that they felt that road could handle is four-hundred trips, and currently, there's a hundred-and-fifty trips that they've counted there.
Okay, and that's between all the businesses that will be there total, right, two-fifty total?
No, that's just whatever is currently there and what is proposed is, they didn't include any of the inland ports things, and like I said, because it's uncertain if and when, inland port would handle that western half, so we just have to go from what the- So we just have to go from what the current Hales engineering is so that it's, yeah. So, yeah, just that each so that that little paragraph in the bottom that each business is. When that development comes in, they provide a how many trips per day their business will handle. And then as development comes in, we have to manage, they can only cap at two hundred and fifty trips. For the entire rezoned area.
How do you? How do you monitor that and enforce that?
We have something in place to enforce.
Yeah, like.
Um, it'd probably be we'd have to contract with our own traffic engineer and maybe every year, every two years or something. And get counts out there.
At our expense.
Yeah, but like I said, that's just gonna be if and when, you know, inland port has to improve Higley Road.
If it doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll only be that condition is only placed until Higley Road is sufficiently improved.
Accounts everywhere else.
I don't want to get involved in that one yet. Their landowners are fighting. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Trish?
Trish, I got just a couple of questions. What's the difference? Why why was this one manufacturing distribution versus manufacturing?
It's just what the applicant preferred.
Okay, what is it? What's the distinction between the two?
Um, it's just whatever uses in the land use table are. It's hard to say. There's just.
Little more heavy industrial.
Yeah.
Okay, then distribution. Thank you.
Yeah, more, I'd say more commercial operations and distribution is more like warehousing.
Okay.
Type uses.
So it's heavier loads?
It just depends.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's up in the public hearing. If you have a quick comment on this, please come forward. As the landowner, do you want to do this or do you want to make your comments after as the landowner?
No, this one doesn't.
It does not because we did a.
We did it last.
Last time. We're outside. Sorry. He doesn't get to address it, does he?
Any questions you have?
All right. Mr. Drew, do we have any questions from him?
My question comes up with this, the Higley uh road. How how are you affected by what was just described? And I don't know if that's a legal truthful situation. I'm sure it's truthful, but I don't know if it's really, the way it was expressed is, does Mr. Higley actually still own that? That's something for lawyers to decide.
Yeah, and our lawyer's in the bag.
I think it's a, this Michael jury, I think it's an issue. Jared Higley told me a long time ago that Arthur kept that out for a strategic reason, this little piece in between. So the county has, to my knowledge, has up to the probably the cannabis farm. And then he has a little piece and then county has after that. And it was, I think, a kind of a little trick or something. I don't know what it is. But my my property is, yeah, I I proposed light manufacturing distribution. And most of the businesses I'm marketing to are warehouses, storage, not super high traffic. And and the discussion I had with Trish about limiting what the current conditions of the road. First of all, the road is actually, I think it's a nice road. It's not, it wasn't made by Arthur. He doesn't spend any money. It was actually done by Jerry Hurst, the previous commissioner. He and I worked on that because it used to be a mud road full of potholes and we were doing a lot of fundraisers down there and he put a road down there. But so it's it's decent. It's not super wide, so there is an issue for two semis to pass on each other. But yeah, most of the, I'm going to be limited by the current traffic study. And so I'm looking for businesses on purpose that aren't gonna use it up. I'm looking on purpose to, you know, because I know one day it will be used up and then all of a sudden I have to address it if the inland port doesn't.
So for instance, right now, part of your property on the previous subdivision is Utah Track and Welding.
Yeah.
Right, but they use up for a lay down yard?
Yeah.
So that's the kind of thing we're looking at for this particular piece.
Yeah, so Utah Track and Welding just stores construction equipment there. The cannabis farm has about twenty employees, so I don't even know where the one fifty is coming from, but we'll continue to monitor that. But if if right now they say there's one fifty and there's two fifty less or left, then we'll try and get, if we pick one. Land or we sell one property or something to a business that uses that up, that's bad for us. We'd say, hey, let's let's not do a a deal with them. Let's do it to businesses that are more in line with storage and even like Mr. Accrolo said, it's data centers. It's it's not these huge traffic things. So even though Hales, and I've done five traffic studies with Hales. Even though they said there's a total maximum thirteen thousand, that's it. Everything's maxed out to the hilt. And the real, the reality is the absorption rate is much slower out there. Now, we're marketing to businesses. We have two businesses that want to move out there. They have some, two or three. It's going slower than that. That that was just a maximum. And probably the truck stop sent it through the roof. They probably shouldn't have included that in the traffic study. But yeah, we want the the development out there. We're trying to keep the jobs here from instead of going to Salt Lake. And the reality is, most of them are not high-traffic businesses. Based on the input we've been marketing on with my associate Cameron, they're mostly storage. People can't expand their businesses in Salt Lake, so they're moving out here to store things and and operate like that. So we haven't seen really high, high traffic ones yet. Anyways, I'm hoping to get that approved with it, you know, that condition. And we're gonna start bringing some smart businesses out that hopefully don't use it up. And then if it does, then I'll be working with inland port to say, hey, what do we got to do to get that road improved? And continue to, we'll we'll have to fix the the Arthur ownership issue one day. I don't know who's gonna fix that, but.
Not us.
It's some little snippet in in between. I don't even know how you pull that off, but we'll have to deal with it one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
If I could comment?
Yes.
It seems like last time we discussed this particular property, one of our concerns was potential emergency response accesses.
I don't remember that part. I know we've addressed it with Mr. Drew before and he had to actually do a little bit. Well, no, he didn't. Fire chief signed off up on the road up to the cannabis facility. So it's after that that it narrows.
Maybe actually widens. After cannabis, it widens.
Up out to Higley's?
Uh, all the way to the port.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll all be taken care of.
I mean, I've seen it from a distance.
Yeah, they'll have to get all those approvals before they can do any.
Commissioner Matt Chilton, did you have a comment?
I I just have a question. So what's the what's the distinction between this applicant and the previous applicant? And is it fair that we put the same condition on this applicant?
Given. The manufacturing versus.
Right.
Yes.
Um, the the problem with this property is that their only access is off Higley Road.
Yes.
Um, the other ones have access off Burmester.
They've they've got three additional that they're building. This one is just a very narrow road. Rush Valley. It's the road between Clover and St. John.
I'm not clear on this one yet. Part of it is, we don't know who owns it.
Well, the road's not our issue.
Okay.
The rezone.
Rezone's compliant within the land plan is what it seems. The traffic burden is.
And the traffic, he's actually worked with staff and did what we asked. Yeah, in May, we had this applicant. He was gonna come back in June. We tabled it, but he didn't have a chance. So he worked really closely, I think, with with staff, with Tricia. And and met what we'd asked for.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Any motions?
Motion to accept. Or recommend or what was the right?
Favorable recommendation. A favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion.
The condition.
With the condition of the additional two hundred and fifty cars per day.
Correct.
Max.
Max.
Until Higley Road.
So four hundred max or an additional?
Okay, that Higley Road can handle up to four hundred trips per day. And so the, yeah, the current is one fifty, so two fifties left. So, yes.
Okay.
If you want to read that one little paragraph for the condition, I guess.
So Commissioner Mitchell has proposed a favorable recommendation to the planning or to the county council. With the following. Where did it go? Right there. An additional two hundred and fifty cars per day max for a total of four hundred cars per day.
Do we have to reclassify that too as a truck route? That was in your recommendation?
Probably be best to do it.
So add add that to it, please.
Okay, each future business use proposed shall provide a number of trips per day with that their business will bring the max allowed trips. For the entire proposed rezoned area to be capped at two hundred and fifty trips per day. Or is that an additional two fifty? That's.
The rezoned area can only bring in.
Only two hundred and fifty trips per day until Higley Road is sufficiently improved to provide for more traffic. We have a motion, that was the motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Commissioner Dow has seconded that. Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Alder? Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. What was your second condition? Clarify, just write it down.
You had the.
Traffic, the transportation plan.
Yeah.
Update, okay.
The truck route.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't clarify. Do I need to redo that one?
I have a point of inquiry here. This is for Rochelle. Wouldn't an amendment of a particular road, amendment to the traffic, the master transportation plan, wouldn't that have to be an agenda item?
We don't have to amend the master transportation plan to identify this as a truck route.
Okay, and.
It's not part of the general plan. It's a completely different.
There's a little bit of confusion in the, because it was listed in the last applicant's rezone request. There was just a little bit of confusing language in there, and so I'm glad we clarified there.
But yes, if we update the master transportation plan, you absolutely.
Okay, so we have. A site plan review.
Yeah, so. Presenting item SPR twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-six. Adobe Rock is requesting a smaller setback for their proposed pavilion. It's gonna be just over three feet from Village Boulevard. And so our land use code says that. Commercial zones can have up to a zero foot setback with planning commission's approval. So that's just what they're requesting is just, it's normally a twenty-foot setback for like a front setback, but.
I have a question. As I was reviewing this and driving by every day. This is on the east side of SR thirty-six, right?
Yes.
On there, so, oh, okay. So I didn't realize that.
Right next to where their scale house is.
Their scale house. I didn't realize the Village Boulevard extended across the freeway.
Yeah, so that was a new development in the last couple of years, so the county made an agreement with those gravel pits. And it eventually will connect all the way up to Drew Bay.
Oh, okay. It I I knew that because we have the truck route coming behind off of Bates and and Drew Bay. But I didn't realize that was gonna be public road eventually.
Yeah, it'll be a nice road when the gravel pits are done.
See, we are looking ahead. Okay, any.
So really, there's not any concern with the three-foot setback because that road is dedicated as a hundred foot right away, which is our max currently right now anyway.
Okay.
And it's just a pavilion. It's not, it's something they can pick up and move.
And since this is a subdivision, we can approve. So just clarified, but thanks. We will open to public.
You won't have public hearing on this one? It's, yep, it doesn't require any.
You need to make this.
It just has to be approved through you.
Okay. I make motion that we approve. SPR two zero two five dash zero eight-six. To approve the three-foot setback for Adobe Rock Pavilion. And motion in a second to approve. Guys, change those numbers on the SPR two zero two five zero eight-six with the three-foot setback. Commissioner Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Okay.
This next one won't require public hearing either.
This next one?
Yeah.
Okay. It's two zero two five zero three seven. Applicants are requesting final plat approval for the amended plat of Brickley Per acre subdivision.
Um, yeah, so this one is already exists as a subdivision. It's just north of Wendover City. Um, sorry, there were, I had a presentation and I didn't send it to Rochelle. So they're just requesting an extra lot and then making an internal private road. Through to access all of those. Really, that's only the the only amendment.
Trish, do they need a CUP for that?
It's already recorded technically. I don't know. Yeah. Um, so we're just going through approval as the subdivision to get an approved private road here.
How many lots are there now?
Three.
Three, so they're just putting a fourth lot? What's the size of the lot?
Oh, yeah. I don't know each of them. But, yeah, they conform to the R five zoning.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, so it's all been approved through all the reviewing agencies. Um, we've actually, because this one's amended plats are a little bit different. So. I have maybe the state code will eventually change it. For right now, you still see final plat amendments. Like the amendments are all just final, so you'll, I don't know how this is gonna work out, but so that's why it's coming before you. Yeah, so it's really just formality. You're just the last reviewing agency to approve it. Everybody else has approved it and okayed the road and all of that.
Okay.
I have just one question. You had you had me with all the recommendations you had, so you said that little section becomes private? Is that right?
Yes.
Is that real private right now?
Um, it's not. This is kind of a tricky situation. So it wasn't, you'd have to see the plat before. So that lot two was one lot. That whole arm and everything, that flag lot, was just part of the lot.
Lot one and two is one lot. Okay.
Uh, well, no, lot two and three were one lot, kinda. Yeah, those, and so they technically all had access off Lappy Road right there. But when they created the fourth lot and they split those and changed that, it landlocked it. So they had to, they're, they created an easement. It's recorded there already. That's why I was like, I don't know. I, we don't need a conditional use improvement if we just approve it with the plat. So we just need to prove the amendment with adding the lot and the private road and it will take care of that.
It's not that section of Lappy Road?
No, uh, Lappy is the corner. No, uh, Lappy is the corner off to the top lot. And then they had a driveway and everything there for the other lot, they made it an easement, they've recorded all of that. So we just need to approve it as this and then, um, yeah, just make sure, um, I guess just to clarify with the, the planning staff recommendation is that you grant approval for Prickly Pear Acres subdivision amended one with the private road, Prickly Pear Lane. Um, and then when they go record that, they will also record, it's kind of a weird process in the recorder's office. They'll have to record the road maintenance agreement at the same time they do this plat. And they'll write in that, a little amendment, the recording document number on this plat when that happens. So it'll overlap the. Yeah, same thing.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Recommend approval, approval, is that the right verbiage, okay, for AMD SUB two oh two five dash oh three seven, Prickly Pear's Acres subdivision amendment one to include the private road?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Alder, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. I adjourn the meeting. You tell Blair that.